Well, I heard the base ones, you read the boxes and that was.
I'm going to take them over here. Trial area, trial area.
They had a lot of drama.
Call me, you're on. Stand for what?
What? Let's leave this to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For me, Sandy, for a moment, silence, please. All right, you may proceed. On announcements, I want to thank Caribbean Monk for making sure that this got into the Asheville paper. And y'all may have seen it, but this is for Max and Leila Dashin from Black Mountain, who had their first successful auditions on American Idol. I'm not sure how far they've gone. I haven't been too much earlier, but I just think that's, and there he was, Max saying, I'm from Black Mountain, walk away. So I thought that was good. If you want to go ahead and say to the public, if anybody has any issues, have had some issues with their water, with the billing, with usage, whatever, just give me a call, please. My number is 777-0281. With that, I will go ahead and read the ethic statement. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the council, all council members are to be duty to conduct the affairs of the governing board in open and public manner where there are conflicts of interest. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, insubstantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any council member, either for family or close business associates?
No.
Hearing none. Does any council member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this council today?
No.
No.
There being none, all council members have a duty and an obligation to vote. Got a couple proclamations here. First proclamation is International Transgender Day of Visibility. Whereas observed annually on March 31st, International Transgender Day of Visibility is the day set aside to celebrate the countless contributions of transgender and non-binary Americans have made to affirm their strength and resilience and perseverance in the face of adversity. Whereas transgender Americans are a integral part of our nation's workforce and community by serving in the military, our medical professionals, our elected officials, our business owners are raising their own families, and much more, but to continue to face high levels of discrimination, fierce stigma and bias that can induce violence and violence against the transgender community. Whereas our community benefits from the diversity of this population and seeks to support inclusion of all, and plus a testament to our shared values of dignity, equity, and fair treatment for everyone without regard to their gender identity and expression. Whereas Transgender Day of Visibility helps bring public awareness to hate crimes against transgender Americans and honors and endures those harmed and killed by ceaseless acts of violence they fear. Whereas while progress has been made, there's still much more to be done to ensure transgender and non-binary citizens are treated equally and with dignity. Whereas on this day, observed, the Town of Black Mountain intends to move forward together to promote inclusion, equity, and awareness of transgender and non-binary citizens in our community and every community across the state and nation. Therefore, I see Michael Sowell, mayor of the Town of Black Mountain, do proclaim March 31st, 2024, as Transgender Day of Visibility in Black Mountain, and commend this ordinance to all our citizens. Second one is Women's History Month. Whereas the 2024 theme for Women's History Month is women who advocate for equity, diversity, and inclusion, recognizing in every community who have devoted their lives to embracing everyone in the common quest for freedom and opportunity. And whereas the history of International Women's Day and Women's History Month emerged from the labor and anti-war movements of the early 20th century with an emphasis on women's suffrage and workers' rights, that later expanded to include equal pay and other fair labor practices, sexual and reproductive rights, and the prevention of gender-based violence. And whereas History Women's History Month offers a reminder that all attempts to defeat women, erode women's rights and promote and offend gender-based violence, whether in the home, public, or legislature, must be resisted. Whereas Women's History Month offers an opportunity to celebrate the contributions that women of every race, class, and ethnic background, sexual orientation, and gender identify have made to the social, cultural, and economic life of the community. Whereas women are serving in the leadership roles throughout the Town of Black Mountain organization, including several department heads, and since the election of Alderman Margaret Schlegel in 1971, the citizens of Black Mountain have proudly elected 13 women to local office, including the current-serving council members Pam Keen and Alice Berry. Now therefore, I see Michael Sowell, mayor of the Town of Black Mountain, here for March 24th, as to be Women's History Month in Black Mountain. I encourage all citizens to participate in Women's History Month events and to learn about and celebrate the wise history and contributions of women during this month and throughout the year. And with that, we will have citizen comments. We have one, Liba. Please come forward.
Kat, and pronounce Latin.
You can say Oscar Mayer.
Okay.
You can say Octomire.
Oscar Mayer. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Liba Bailey, and I live at 103 East Cotton Avenue in Black Mountain.
And I'm Chad Octomire. My address is 402 West Conley Street here in Black Mountain. Also represent the pickleball community on the Parks and Greenways Foundation. I spoke to you last month about the possibility of adding two additional pickleball courts to the already four proposed. And even though we filled up most of the room last time, while some of our pickleball players are here, others are gathered at the Black Mountain Library in a pickle group, pickle book group that studies a book every month and discusses it, it's grown out of our community. And another number of group of them, Senator President, and another group of them are now working on their drills out there and of course, as we gather.
So I feel sort of like, if y'all ever watch Shark Tank, I feel like we're on Shark Tank. Last month, at the February meeting, we told you that we were committed to help provide financial assistance so that we could have two additional pickleball courts to the already four proposed. I wish that you could have been tracking the emails that have been generated by that comment. They've been coming nonstop. Our community is very excited, very active. We've had all kinds of ideas, grants, loans, parties with our auctions by our members, seeking business sponsors. It could go on and on and on. I actually got one of them, Bompers, trying to be polite and supportive.
Finally, one of our group came up with a great idea of a survey monkey. All members of the pickleball community were sent a survey with this message, quote, "We are not asking for an actual check right now, we are asking you to make a pledge. This means if the Town of Black Mountain needs our money to add the two additional courts, you will be willing to write a check for the amount you pledge," end quote. We also added that only one person will know who donated and how much, and it may be either of us, so don't even ask.
This went out to all the pickleball players that we have who have signed up to get emails from us, and that list ranges from people who are 13 to 86. Right now, the average age of Black Mountain pickleball players is 64, but that number gets younger and younger and younger every year. Most of us live in Black Mountain and in this surrounding area, but we also had a whole lot of visitors in 2023. They were from over 23 states and one territory. We have students, young professional nurses. We have a retired nurse who literally saved the life of a pickleball player on the courts one day. We've got every kind of working and retired professional you can imagine.
And our fundraising pledge request has remained in-house only. That means we haven't sold one of these anywhere else. We want to try and be good stewards of this community and support this community that we love so much.
So, we're only four weeks out from our last meeting with you. This is four weeks ago tonight. As of 4:55 PM this afternoon, 62 people have pledged $25,000, $25,375 to help build the two additional pickleball courts. We await your guidance as to when you would like for us to make the pledges available for the town's use, and we really do thank you for allowing us to partner with you to make this happen for our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I will say that one of the things that has, that has grown, Liba was one of the first ones to set up the beautification committee. And I mention that because committees outside, those appointed by the board, have really contributed a lot to the growth in Black Mountain. Not just beautification, but in basketball, but in tennis, and now pickleball. So, thank you very much for contributing to the town. The next one up is Judy Repman. Give your name and address in number three minutes.
Thank you so much. Judy Repman, 104 South Park Lane, Black Mountain. I'm here as a representative of the Friends of the Black Mountain Library. I'm the current recording secretary, and I'm just here to offer our support and our encouragement to establish a little free board book library at Town Square, which is an item later under agenda today. We are anxious to partner with the community. We are strong supporters of literacy and little free libraries and libraries in Black Mountain, and we will be unique in having a little free board book Black Mountain in our community. We currently have several for children and many for adults, but this will be the first little free board book library. So I would encourage you to give your consideration to that, and we'll take care of it once it's there. So we will make sure it's stocked and ready for little free board book readers. Thank you.
Thank you. And Beebe Woodside?
She said it. Thank you.
Very good. All right, and with that, that's the end of the citizen comments, so take it away, Josh.
Couple things before we get into the agenda, Mr. Mayor, if I can. Item 5C, consideration of flooding damage. I have a couple of questions about flooring at Carver. And then as far as item 5C3, acceptance of the public Wi-Fi, I would request that we pull the public Wi-Fi until I get some more info. I've got some info, but I want to get a little bit more to see what that looks like in the long term. But as far as the Carver flooring goes, I did speak with the mayor, does the board have any interest in pulling that and looking for a cheaper price?
Josh, could you talk about what kind of bidding you did with that?
I will let Mr. Henderson come and talk about that.
So if you remember, two or three months ago, we had, did a budget of flooring, and we were going to do it in-house, just for the materials. And after the budgeting was done, the employee that had that skillset was not with us. So I reached out to Black Mountain Handyman, and I think I contacted maybe one other person, but I didn't get any response from, so I moved forward with that.
What's the urgency on?
The urgency is that the flooding damage took place almost a year ago, and that there could be mold or leak the floor, and they want to be able to use that. They haven't been, they haven't been using that classroom currently, so they want to return to that classroom.
Because the damaged flooring is still literally in place. I mean, it hasn't.
So there was water other, when they came back from spring break, there was water in the classroom?
Yeah.
So we fixed the leak in the floor, just the last, last piece of that puzzle.
And it has not delaminated from the floor?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm not a flooring specialist or anything, but.
Yeah, I was speaking with Josh earlier today about this, and it doesn't sound like time is of the essence, and if we can get some bids maybe from some of the flooring companies, and then maybe decide this at the next meeting.
So at this point, I'm sure I'm right, we've got materials already in place. We have to have, we have nothing.
We didn't purchase the materials because of the way it was.
Thank you.
So do I hear a motion to delete that or leave it on?
Since we have the purchased materials to repair it, I'd be comfortable making a motion to pull this night and.
Take it up the next meeting.
Take it up at the next meeting.
All in favor?
Are we voting the whole agenda?
No, 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 just, just pulling that.
Okay.
Pulling that and, and I guess we'll.
You can do the third one.
We'll do the third one. So, so you're pulling both of them?
Yes, I'll be both.
Okay. So the vote is for, to pull C1 and C3 from the agenda.
Well, I would have voted to keep the Carver on the agenda and we need to include the acceptance, so it needs to be two separate.
Okay, we'll do two votes, one on the Carver flooring. To pull it from the agenda and take it up next month.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, three to one. All right, it's next month. And then on the acceptance of, I mean, pulling C3, even with Wi-Fi. Do I hear a motion to pull that also?
I'll need to wait on that until next month, pulling up all information.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, four of them.
Thank you. All right, I'm fully, the communications from staff, councils, commissions, and agencies, and we're going to have a presentation from Jessica Trotman in regards to our lead and copper water replacement rule.
I'll look over here. I'm going to keep this short, but I assure you, this rule is not short. So as the big logo suggests, this is from the EPA. This is an update to the existing lead and copper rule regulations, and this is going to be at a very high level and done in two parts. So the lead and copper rule currently, we'll refer to as the LCR, Copper Rule, is focused on creating an inventory. And then there is the lead and copper rule I, which is the service line replacement program to be finalized before October of this year, when your guess is as good as mine. I've tried every office at Little Answer Phone, nobody knows. So what is LCR? That is probably the final rule that's going to expand. It is a service line inventory that is required. So I'll show you what, a picture of a service line in just a second, but it's important to distinguish it from a distribution line. It's going to require significant field work and community cooperation, and it has to be submitted to EQ back to verse 16. It includes a minimum of the following elements, a unique ID, the address and PIN, and the material from the line, the distribution line to the meter, and from the meter to the house. There are many other factors that you can collect, which may be helpful in development of planning documents that you're required to have, grant applications, but for the purposes of meeting your regulatory requirement for this inventory, they are not required. There are other administrative requirements that you have to submit on October 16th. And one is an actionable plan that goes into effect the following day. And these are the elements of that plan. A strategy for determining the composition of lead status, unknown service lines, and inventory. It's very important to note that we don't really think we have any lead service lines. We have copper and galvanized, but the focus of this at a national level is wet. So that is the language that you see most commonly through the document. And after you submit the inventory, you have to have a strategy to identify any unknowns 10% after that, next 10 years. You have to have a procedure for conducting full service line replacement based on your inventory findings. a strategy for informing customers before a service line is, before service line replacement, a service line replacement goal rate, and there are calculations within that, procedures for customers to flush service lines, and premise flushing of particulate lead if there is such risk, and service line replacement prioritization strategy. Those are the factoids that you can collect during your field work. That's where developing that matrix strategy can come into place. So here is a handy little diagram. So you're water main, and then you have the utility ownership to the meter. And that's what we're used to talking about. But for the first time, in my career, we're also talking about the other side of the meter. So these are the four categories of service line classification. Plastic, so yeah, sorry, these are the pictures that are illustrated. Service lines fall into these categories. Lead, which we don't expect to find, galvanized requiring replacement, which is this whole other thing, which we don't really need to go down right now, but we do have the potential to have, non-lead, and unknown. So your non-lead are going to be copper and PVC. And unknown are things that you have not laid eyes on yet, and you don't know what they are. This is about half of the spreadsheet. It's laid out linearly, so you do your utility line, and then you just keep working across, and you add the service line. Those tabs, and the detailed inventory tab at the bottom, that's where all of this stuff gets entered. The rest are documents related to public accessibility, all of your procedures, how you gathered your data, information about your, basically a bio, your water system, and things like that, that you have to compile when you turn this document in. So you can see we have some information populated there. I'll talk about that in just a sec. So there are some more action items required. Water customers who are served by lead, galvanized, required replacement, or unknown service lines must be notified within 30 days of the inventory completion. The notice must include a statement about the service line material, the effective ways to minimize that exposure. Notification requirements depend on, notification requirements depend on the type of material in the line. The notices must be repeated annually. You have to submit a copy of the notification to the water supply section, and then a little bit of white junk into boxes, but hopefully that's not another action that's meant to be together, by July 1st for the previous calendar year. And you have to send a copy of your public notice to the state. We already have spreadsheets to track all this, or to have drafts of all the public notices. All the language is in the federal statute that you bring over. They leave you no real little room. So these are the things that we have done so far. We've determined which service lines can be classified as non-lead. That's about 30% of our service lines. So then the 70% of our service lines, which is about 3,100, 3,100, that's a little bit of a moving target still, are unknown. So we are going to have to inventory those visually. We're going to have to determine which of those lines will require field investigation. We'll begin to inventory the service lines during regular field activities through public works. We've already written the standard operating procedures for that. SOPs for lots of things, for inventory creation, inventory management, maintenance reporting, field investigations, meeting with some consultants tomorrow to help with field work and building all of this data into the system. Creating, we've created a website about the requirement rules. We'll keep expanding that as we have more information to put out. We had a press release go out two weeks ago?
Maybe a week ago.
Week ago?
I'm sorry.
We've had some, we have a whole catalog of, I think catalog might be excessive. We have a whole list of social media stuff prepped and ready to go, and a public media, and community education outreach strategy scheduled through November to help keep people engaged informed of this inventory process. We've drafted those 30-day notices about unknown service lines and the GRR lines, SOPs for documentation and documentation. And we've started a good draft of that replacement plan that has to go with the inventory on October 16. We'll present that to you in August in case you want to tweak it. It doesn't require approval, but because it has budgetary implications, I'm going to ask for approval before I give it to the state. Okay, so this is where things get even weirder. We don't know what's happening here. We know what's proposed. EPA keeps saying this is what's going to happen. We're just going to finalize this. But there's been a lot of "ruahah" across the country making public comment about how to potentially modify this. So how this will come down the pipe exactly, "ha, ha, ha," we're not sure. We are, I am anticipating having a lot of these elements because we're required to submit plans to implement it. So we'll be prepared at a minimum. The LCRI is intended to achieve 100% of lead service lines in the entire country in 10 years, which sounds amazing, but also challenging. So it's going to require that it maintains inventory. So we've already developed SOPs for to maintain this inventory once it's created. The LCRI, interestingly enough, delays the deadline for the action plan, but puts legal requirements for related to the water system's ability to replace, replace and pay for replacement of privately owned service lines. It adds additional legal review. Right now, I just uploaded, and just said, "We're going to try our hardest." And if, when this is passed in its current form, it's going to have an attorney look at it and tell me if it's been applied. I don't know beyond that line of evidence. It's going to improve tap sampling, lower lead action levels, and strengthen protection against, to reduce exposure. It's broadly going to make lead exposure less acceptable across testing across the country.
So the lead action levels, basically saying what threshold is going to tolerate?
Yes.
If that uncovered, it will be...
That's right. And it also indicate where you're sampling from, the fifth, first liter and fifth liter, and all these sorts of things. And I understand lots of these things, we already do. So we're just kind of in standby to see what of this gets formalized. There is some funding out there for LCRI, which also makes me think that they're going to move forward because people are already getting this money and already implementing it. So I don't know what to make of that. But we are going to discuss making an application for this part of this program, but not act on it until we get further guidance. So we'll be positioned potentially to be ready, in whatever manner it gets finalized at the federal level. At the moment, the funding that is available, there's multiple pots of money available in different ways. There's like Healthy Communities money and things, but there is the, the federal infrastructure money that's specific to this is made available in the way of low interest and forgivable loans. And you don't know which ratio that you're going to get into when you make your application. So we do have a website up. It's under the Healthy Communities tab in the Planning Department website. So we have timelines, FAQs, and other things related to Healthy Communities. And we do have a workshop on April 3rd at 5:30 here with folks from TEQ, and we have postcards going out to every single Black Mountain water customer. So we might have to have it at a different place. But that is, those are, those are going out in the mail today or tomorrow. So there we will have a rolling effort for folks to help identify their lines, and more information coming about that process. But just wanted to bring the public up to speed about most of us inventory process, and that detail's coming soon about next steps. And not to panic, and we don't expect, we have, we don't have lead popping in our water. Everything, everything is fine. And, but we are, we're here to do the right thing. We just are waiting for more eyes from the beds.
One of the questions here is how that you would, so we're looking more for service lines versus the town lines?
Well, just...
I know we're going to be doing both, but it seems like most of this, is that term service basically from the meter to the house?
No, it's both sides. And it's from, from the, from the distribution line to the meter and from the meter to the house. It is both, we have to inventory both sides individually.
So there's two parts of service?
That's right.
Town service, private home.
That's right.
Would you mind if I threw that graphic back out?
Yeah, you can.
And so we, we're just, we need to lay eyes on both of them, right?
Mm-hmm.
Both sides.
Mm-hmm.
And do we think we can do that by looking at the meter and seeing connections, or?
Potentially.
What would, what would keep us from doing that?
The, when we get my reasonable words, these nets and connections often extend up to 18 inches beyond the box and may not be visible. So the guidance is actually to look at 18 inches beyond the meter. But that doesn't mean that that would be the case. Ideally, you would be able to look in the meter box, but that doesn't mean that it is always possible.
And so if we can't see, if we can't see it, we'll dig a hole 18 inches out?
Potentially.
And we'll be doing that on private property?
Potentially. And there are guidelines about methods of notification, how many times we try, what to do for rights of entry, and all these things that all have to be documented in multiple attempts. And these things repeat upon service line links. There is a, there is a rulebook for every single step through this process, through the inventory and on the side of replacement. That is extremely, it's a huge industry.
And the service line, if, if, if we do end up needing to replace people's service lines on the meter, that, that's just up to their house, or is that underneath the house as well? What's included as a service line?
Where it ties into the house.
Where it ties into the house.
Is that what's saying is the shut-off valve?
I mean, I think so.
Okay. And as far as we know, on our side, we don't anticipate there being many issues, though.
We don't expect it to be lead, but I would, I do expect if I got, unless it needs to be replaced.
Okay. And in many cases, that may require digging of the road, or conceivably, inside wall? Oh, boy.
Looking at this from just, what we're talking about is digging, and then we're just going to be looking externally at the pipes. And we do all types of monitoring now, from the inside of the pipe, from just testing the water. Is that going to be enough that if we were to test people's homes' water for four, five, six different times, and there was zero lead or zero galvanize coming through?
There is a provision to do a, a test out, but it is, it is cost prohibitive. Nobody's doing it. It is cheaper to do visual inspections and dig a hole.
Those tests are pretty expensive now. They get more expensive in the year, those tests.
Or testing the lead.
Any of the lead or the copper, any of those tests that we, that we do, that we do on hours, it's much bigger system. So I started that.
It has to sit.
But this is not, I mean, the copper is not part of this equation, right?
This, well, there are copper provisions in, in, yes. But this inventory is specific to defining the material of the service line. It is not about parameters. This first part is just about the inventory and the plan and some administrative things. And then the LCRI will expand parameters.
When you mentioned the thing about the 10% of unknown, where are we at Black Mountain as far as unknown?
70%.
70%.
Currently, because we haven't done the inventory. At the end of the inventory, we will have some amount of unknown. And when you submit that plan, you, so you have 30% unknown, and that you're, you have to say, "This is how we will address, we know that this is where they are, and this is how we will identify those, at least 10% of those each year moving forward."
Why would we have 30%?
I just made a...
And, no, no, like, why would we not be 10%?
Time. Yeah.
I haven't heard you talk about use of cameras to get in those pipes. I guess that's not helpful.
No, not in this area. I don't continue that.
Well, we're going...
Yes, I bet there are dogs that do that.
If you end up looking, let's say we're talking about the town service lines, forget the private right now, there's just the town service lines. So that if we were, the, the town's water system basically is in some type of quadrants, not just four quadrants, but according to cut-off valves. We've got it down maybe eight sections, just for talking purposes here. If we were able to say that if we went from Flat Creek up to Ridge to Boulevard, if you were able to determine that pipe on that end with the water, and the pipe of Ridge to Boulevard, can you make the assumption then that the pipe in between?
Not even, no.
How are you going to do it?
What?
How, how is that going to be done?
One at a time. Because these are laterals off the distribution line. I could go, you could go home this afternoon and have a leak on the lateral coming off of your distribution, off the distribution line and replace it. It could be galvanized, and now it could be plastic. And that, just that one little piece would be changed. But that would not impact your neighbor above or below you. That little piece right there.
Definitely. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how, the more you keep talking, the more you keep saying, inferring that possibly this has to be, everything's going to be dug up.
I mean, well, I don't know.
How do we, how do we prove without having to dig everything up?
You hope that the, that the meters are effective, and that...
That what?
That looking in the meters is effective. That's your defense then, otherwise you are going to be digging some.
Looking in the mirrors.
Meters.
Water mirrors.
Meters.
And if you look in the water meter, it's just a visual from the outside, and we're not testing the inside of the water, I mean, the water.
You are testing the physical material of the pipe. That is what the inventory is of. What is it made of? Is it not, is it plastic? Is it copper? Is it lead? Is it galvanized?
Right, but it could be something that's not going to show up in a water test, but we still have to know what material.
Yeah, the inventory is not, did you test, we already tested our water system is, what is the line now?
And we've replaced 18 different spots, and the water system would have breaks, of course. So... This is very corny, you see?
Yeah, this is, this is a large, a large deal that every single person in this country's got to deal with, if they're water, they're water distributor. So, yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not the most straightforward thing. I agree with you. A lot of this, we're not going to know until, until they make that final rule on how it's got to be replaced. Keeping my fingers crossed that we don't have to.
So right now, fortunately, we would have 30% of the knowledge, and we would have seven years to take care of the unknown.
10.
I thought it said 10% of what was unknown?
You stopped 10%. The clock's not ticking on the LCRI then.
Okay, so you still got 10, so we got enough to measure for two years or so, about.
And we're already entering, we were already working on inventory of those 30% of getting those in.
And we know that because of when the owners built it, right?
Yeah, the first thing I did was pull the real estate appraisal data, and sorted it by year. So, and so that was, that was how we, we took that breakdown.
And Asheville has already started this, right? Have other municipalities in there?
Many, yes.
And, and they're, you're in the same thing we're talking about it, right? Like I said, starting at the beginning.
They are, they have a compliance person, when I called her, she was under a house. Yep, and they are about to replace $2 million worth of lines. So they're already starting.
Any other questions?
Thank you for all the research and my work and organizing all of this, so that we might be more ahead than I would.
Michael asked pickleball people, they've got creative ideas, so they'll give us some of those ones.
All right. Excuse me, your next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Five A will be adoption of minutes, January twentieth, February eighth and February twelfth. Item five B will be your monthly property tax collection report. Mr. Mayor, you didn't ask about sales tax. I will report that through five months, so through November of last year, we have collected one million thirty thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars.
How does that compare to a previous?
You know, if December comes in the same way the other months have, we're on track.
Not that much up, not that much down.
We're about, we're about, you know, we're about on track. On what we budgeted, we might be fifty thousand dollars short. It's just gonna depend on how, how that comes in over January, February, probably those sales months. So I, I'll keep y'all informed, of course.
The reason I was asking, because last year, fortunately, at the end of the year, we ended up with about four to five hundred thousand that we were able to use for budget.
And next year, they're saying, we got some projections today, about three percent minimal increase in sales tax across the country. So, not a whole lot.
All right, good, thank you.
True. Item C will be your waste reduction and recycling part to the budget amendment. Five D will be an amendment, excuse me, an amendment to the twenty twenty-four town council meeting calendar to accommodate our budget work sessions, those beginning on March twenty-first, Thursday morning at eight thirty. Five E will be approval of the twenty twenty-four audit contract with Dude Killian CPA Group. This is our last year on a three-year contract with this auditing firm. Item five F, call for public hearing for voluntary annexation of property owned by Gibbons Highland Farms. Five G, call for public hearing to rezone the same property and regive it a zoning designation. Five H will be a resolution to apply for section three nineteen NPS pollution control grant for street restoration on the Black Mountain Golf Course on Tomahawk Branch. Five I, resolution to apply for NC DOT, IMD multimodal planning grant for comprehensive bike, bicycle and pedestrian plan. We want to update our dated plans that we currently have in place. Five J will be a resolution to apply for passive recreation lands grant for construction of the Ridge Crest Connector Trail Multi-Use Path. And five K will be an approval of resolution authorizing the use of design field delivery method for the Cravemont Park renovation project. And that'll be your consent.
There's a lot of questions on this, I mean, that I have, I would just like to, should we go ahead and get, do you want to get a motion and then we'll discuss it? Just, you know, discuss each, I've got several in there I'd like to just ask questions on about the amount of money.
Do you want to start with that in case we need to pull something from?
Okay. The biggest thing is on the, is on the carts. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, uh, there's a lot of figures here. Some of them just don't seem to die when you start adding things up. First of all, let's just say this, the sales price that Toder has now given us, uh, that seems to be a lot less than what it was when we were talking about, uh, these cards last time. So my question is this, is it, does that figure there already include some type of a grant that we're getting?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Mayor.
So that then, would it be safe to say that if we go ahead and we budget this, this, uh, two thousand three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that then that figure then will be reduced by a certain amount of the state grants?
Fifteen dollars per cart.
The state, the budget amendment had the state funds for the grant and it had our portion. I will tell you that, talking to Michelle, there's an additional twenty-nine thousand that Josh and I was aware of, that they had sent her separately. There was an invoice for them to complete the installation of the carts, because she said they're only like two-thirds complete when they send them to us and they come and they install them at all the addresses or they deliver them to all the addresses and set them up. So that was an additional twenty-nine thousand delivery and installation. So that'll be another budget amendment next month for that remainder, because it wasn't included in that.
Because they had on here nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars for shipping.
Shipping, yeah, they shipping that's separate than the delivery fee they're charging us plus the installation. They're shipping all the pieces, um, as far as I can gather, uh, and then they're coming here to the site and finish installation of it. Is that correct, Michelle? Is that what you understood from Michelle also?
Right, because we're opting to not, can deliver these with our staff, but to have someone go pop the lids on, pop the wheels on, whatever that. I mean, my guess is we're stacking all of them inside each other, put the lid on.
Yeah, so they're shipping them here and then they're coming here and then they're putting them together and taking them to all the residents.
Good option for them.
So if we're looking at fifteen dollars, that's for both a ninety-six and a sixty-four?
Sixty-four is the only energy bag, it's just a ninety-six.
So, so if we're getting three thousand on that then, so that's forty-five thousand dollars, uh, grant money that we, that we get.
Forty-five six, that's correct.
So, does that, so this figure that I just quoted, or two, three, two, hundred, hundred thousand, uh, is that then what we're gonna have to come up with? Is that figure minus seventy thousand dollars?
Do you have?
No, the budget amendment.
The budget amendment is over two hundred thousand. Budget is two, is two forty-two.
Our appropriated, our match is a hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
Match for what?
That's all the town's portion.
That's our portion of the grant.
So if we subtract one twenty-six from this two forty-two, then that means that they're paying?
About a hundred and sixteen thousand is what they're paying.
They're paying a hundred and sixteen thousand.
That's their grant.
And then we're gonna be paying, looks like. So that, so that's where the two, two forty-two comes?
Yes, that's, that's where the total comes from, plus we'll have another twenty-nine thousand that'll also come from.
Well, I'm glad that we're getting a hundred and sixteen thousand, but the, but the math doesn't work out. We're getting fifteen dollars per ninety-six gallon company.
Mr. Mayor, they give you more money than just the match. You know, when we talked about this grant application months ago, we had all those figures in there. They do give you more money besides just fifteen dollars. There's a forty thousand dollar upfront they give you as well, and that's all in their grant bank work.
It just didn't, it was, it was just not very clear here. So, so the only money that we're gonna be paying is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Plus the twenty-nine thousand.
Plus twenty-seven, twenty-nine thousand for delivery.
Plus twenty-nine thousand.
It's twenty-seven, twenty-nine, I can't remember the exact amount, it's twenty-seven, twenty-nine thousand for the delivery and setup.
Okay, so a hundred and twenty-six is what, is what we're gonna be paying then?
That'll be the budget amendment for tonight and then.
We do the twenty-nine.
Next month.
Uh, I know that it's, I know y'all have discussed this, y'all have talked about it and decided it, but I just have to say, because of talking to so many people, I sort of wish that, hope that we tried to do something with Totes, because we got a lot of people that are gonna opt out of not doing the recycling.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah, and it is unfortunate, because we're fortunate to take these people's things.
I do remember a long discussion at night at that council meeting about whether or not to make this universal or to give people an option, and the council voted to make it universal after a long conversation.
No, that's what y'all voted on. And that's, I'm just simply trying to bring it up to let them, in the public, know that this is, we're gonna be, there'll be a lot of people opting out of the system of these options.
Let's say it'll be some.
I think I've talked to a lot of people. So, but there again, that's up to the board.
I, I just, I just remind the public that this is standard across most municipalities in the region and in the country, including the county, including Asheville, including what have been evolving towards a model like this. And this is, uh, there are many benefits to efficiency, to safety of our public works and sanitation workers, um, and, and hopefully to encourage more recycling for those that, that are able to use a large bin instead of the small two. And unfortunately, we may have to replace bags as well.
And if there's a physical reason why someone cannot bring a large him to the street, that can be handled with, with works doing a backdoor stop. So already a process in place for that.
But they gotta do it.
And, and change is hard and, you know, hopefully this address that we go along.
Those are the questions that I had, that were about.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Um, I'll move to approve, oh, is it time? I'll move to approve the consent of the items as amended to pull, um, the copper flooring and acceptance of Blue Sky grant, um, for next month.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, so we will then move on to, there's, no one signed up for, well, there's no public hearing. So in citizen comment, I didn't hear anybody, didn't seem to think someone signed up for that. So we're new business.
No unfinished business, new business. Nine A, consideration of grow trail free library box at Town Square. Mr. Henderson, please.
All right, so this is a proposal to expand the grow trail, which is a partnership between the Greenways and Trails Committee and the Black Mountain Library. They approached me a month or two ago, wanted to install a little free library box at Town Square, but I'll do best that you guys make that decision. Uh, so you have the information in front of you, which is just kind of the outline, and then you can see a picture of what they're looking to place there and where they want to place it.
I didn't realize this was a board book, library box, which I'm, as a, as a parent, I think that's one. I would move to approve the, uh.
Any discussion?
I think it's a lovely idea. I'm really appreciative of our town members who come forward and say they'll make it happen. We'll tend to it, we'll make sure it stays nice and provide service like that for children.
Any other comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, John.
Nine D, consideration of pool pay rate and fee schedule increases. Also, Mr. Henderson.
So we bring these up every year due to the fact that the, you'll see that the next again item is similar. The summer camp and pool both begin before the new fiscal year starts, so we bring these rates to you. Um, the first thing is the pay rates, again, just trying to stay competitive with hiring staff for the pool, um, which is always challenging, as most of you know. Uh, ninety-eight percent of our staff at the pool is swim team members. Um, so you can see in front of you the different rates that we propose, um, and some comparisons of rates from around our area for the pay rates. And then you also have, um, an amended fee schedule, um, that goes along with that as well. If you have any questions.
I, um, I asked for you to send over numbers. I was curious how many residents versus non-residents we had attending and, and I appreciate you sending us numbers. I was actually surprised, uh, last year we had, um, six thousand one hundred and seventy-one non-residents for day passes and only forty-five hundred, uh, residents. And so I would, I would be interested in seeing if there was, um, any pushback to raising the price for non-residents since residents are already, uh, you know, contributing to this, to, to their taxes. If, if we could leave the price at under five dollars, so four dollars for residents, uh, raise it to six or, or whatever we need to for the, uh, for the non-residents. You know, we're, we're only talking about a forty-five hundred dollar difference, and I'm sure we can find that in the budget.
Are you proposing that just for the daily passes or making adjustments to multiple limited season passes for prices?
So it only thirty-six family passes were purchased last year and thirty-four multi-day pass, passes. So, um, it seems like a much smaller number of people would be impacted. I, I would defer to you, if you think it's better to, to keep those competitive, because, you know, if we're not raising the price on one, then raising the price on the multi-day makes it less appealing, but.
I have no issue with it. You know, one thing to keep in mind, this summer, um, there will be one less pool in the city of Asheville with the Alvern Hills Pool closing down, so we may see, there may be increased numbers for non-residents. I can't say specifically, but.
Do we have a limit?
A limit too.
How many people come? If we bring in, it's like, you know, in a building like this, probably a couple of houses.
The only limit is, uh, on the pool deck, and I wanna say it's around three hundred. I don't know off the top of my head, I'm gonna say it's around three hundred. I have to look at the pool manuals number for certain.
So we've not run into that problem before?
Not often. And it's at a given time, so it could be, you know, that's, that's part of a, a lifeguarding pool staffs to monitor the population out there.
Any other comments? Questions? Got your motion?
Can you talk a little bit more about the differential you described with residents and non-residents?
So right now, right now it's four dollars for residents and five dollars for non-residents. We're proposing raising five, one dollar for each, five dollars for residents and six dollars for non-residents. I'm proposing that we, we maintain it under four, under the five dollars, so four dollars for, for residents for the day pass.
That makes sense to me.
Let me think about it.
I wish we didn't have to raise it for anybody, but if somebody's, feels like the residence shouldn't have this big apartment since they're already paying for it to a certain extent. I'll go with that. So what numbers are you suggesting again?
So, well, so now this does kind of throw everything off, because, so the multi-day pass, like the ten visit pass is now going to discount if we were to raise that. So I guess I'm proposing that we, we keep resident fees all the same across the board.
So for this season pass and the multiple visits, which is a kind of a pass?
Yes. And then raise non, non-resident to the proposed amount.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Any discussion or motion? Here it is, all in favor?
Aye.
It's being opposed.
Thank you, John. And item nine C, consideration of summer camp staff pay rate and hour increases. Mr. Henderson.
So again, this is a, a similar situation. Uh, I have some good news though with summer camp. Um, for the last couple of years, we have held summer camps downstairs of the Lakeview Center due to the, us not being able to use harbor with our afternoon in the Montessori school. So this year, we are going to move summer camp over to Gray Eagle, which gives us the opportunity to expand our enrollment. We've had thirteen the past summers because of the limited space downstairs and only having our minibus. So now we have a minibus and a van, and we're moving to a, a larger space, so we're going to double our enrollment. But we also are gonna have to hire more staff, which is the hour increase. And then again, just trying to stay competitive with pay rates, uh, compared to other camps in our area. So yeah, you guys have any questions?
You're also increasing the number of camps, I can't remember wrong about that, number of weeks?
Weeks was at the same.
Oh, weeks was the same.
Yeah, just, just the enrollment is doubling.
I love that we can serve more children this summer. I think that's so important that the kids have something productive and got big to do, that we can do that more.
And we, you know, every summer we have a very long waitlist, so summer child care is definitely much needed.
No, we gotta pay the staff, we're gonna pay them.
I move to approve the increase in pay staff and hour rates as presented.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When, when does registration start on a camp?
I believe registration opens this weekend, I think so.
I have to give it by the hour, it's like those concerts, you know, the tickets.
It, it sells out very quickly.
All right, nine D, consideration of two oh four Portman, Villa Road, lien release, as I spoke to you about this in our agenda meeting, this was a property that had a dilapidated structure, this has been over eight years ago now, almost, the structure was removed, town paid to have it removed, there was a lien placed on the property, however, there was never a dollar amount placed with that lien, so the lien still stands, but there's no dollar amount placed with it. As I told you in the agenda meeting, staff have been unable to locate any kind of deals or pricing from that time. The attorney that was helping us at the time was not our town attorney, and he no longer has records on this, so in the interest of the caregiver for this gentleman who owns the property, staff is recommending that we just release the lien. My estimation would be probably between three and five thousand dollars, is what it would have been almost ten years ago.
Do you have your motion?
I take that motion to release the lien at this point.
Okay, any more discussion, man? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes.
Out of nine E, will be consideration of resolution to enter into a contract for construction services for the Veterans Park Stream Bank Restoration Project, also known as FEMA Project four three six nine one two. Angela Reese will talk to you about this, just briefly, this is, this is the project we had destroyed in August of two thousand twenty-one, so it's taken us that long to get to where we are through the FEMA process, although I will say I'm happy that we've gotten to this point because this is not going to cost us anything, this will be a reimbursable project through FEMA and unmet needs to the state. Angela?
Well said, thank you, council. The town received six bids for this project, Baker Grading and Landscaping, and original base bids was sixty-eight thousand one hundred and ten dollars and seventy-five cents. HGS LLC was one eighty-nine, seven, twelve, thirty-four. KBS Earthworks came in at two oh seven, four thirty-seven, sixty-five. South Core, their base bid was two eleven, five-ten. North State Environmental was two thirty-three, four-seventy-eight. Land Mechanic Designs came in at two seventy-nine, three forty. And you'll notice in your packet, the recommendation is not to the lowest bid, it's to the lowest responsible responsive bidder, and there was a few reasons for that, I discussed this recommendation with our engineer Recker, and also with our FEMA and our North Carolina Grant Representatives, and just to let everyone know, this is one hundred percent federal and state funded, the town is not obligated for managing this project, but we still have to be good stewards of the tax law, but the reason for recommending HGS LLC, their bid, because it's the lowest responsible responsive bid.
And what was that figure for them again?
And the amount, the total bid is two oh eight, two hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. And that, that total base bid, that accounts for their, their base bid, plus it, it accounts for a contingency of about fifteen percent, ten, fifteen percent. The, the reasons for recommending HGS LLC was that previous to these bids, Baker's Grading and Landscaping, they actually were the contractor who performed the initial repairs, and they did their job, and, I'm sorry, paper here to, I'm gonna say, there were, I just want to clear, their work is not in question, is not in question, and is not considered in this responsiveness of this bid. The, the question was, their bid came in at less than half of the others, and so that raises concerns of responsiveness. There were conversations about could you honor that price and at what cost, and basically it was having to absorb those costs internally. Like I said, I discussed this with our FEMA and our state grant representative, and we all kind of heard that it was not a much responsive, responsible, it has nothing to do with quality work or anything like that, it's just, you know, something could have been forgot, it could have been an error, it just doesn't appear responsive, and then also on the same token, to insulate the town from any type of litigation liability, we have to be fair to the other bidders, who, who, they were generally close in nature, but for context, I will provide these figures to you, the original engineer opinion of probable cost, so that's the original engineer, that engineered the project, they give you an estimate, and that's called probable cost, construction loss, so originally in twenty nineteen, that came in a hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. The current probable cost was one eighty-six, seventeen. And the total, we have construction observation and contingency, so construction observation is when the contractor is responsible, the engineer is responsible for going out to the side and making sure the contractors are doing the work that we were paying them to do according to the plans the engineer wrote, and so they sign off on all these things, and when we get the bills, the engineers look at these bills and certify that those are the things a contractor put in the ground, because I wouldn't know that, I mean, I couldn't see what I see, but I wouldn't know that, so that, that is what mostly possible construction cost, when I do large bids, it's gonna be built into these bids, so, anyway, two thirty-two, five twenty-one was about the estimate, and addition to that, the town, as part of our process, and you, you hear when we give you estimates for things for, for Black Mountain Park, these are requirements of our policy, is that staff is required to give you three estimates, and that's all they are, they're estimates, we, we're soliciting vendors and we're saying, please give us the best one, because my cost is, those are just reference numbers, but on larger things, those are required, and I have to keep a record on the large bids to show that I did my good diligence to protect the town and the taxpayers, to, to, you know, at least do homework, to say, what could this cost, and so we have to compare those projects that are similar in nature, and so my cost estimate was in the two hundreds, so it, it all lined up, so everybody always costs around two hundred thousand. The original construction bid, the original bid for this project was from Baker, and it was ninety-nine thousand dollars, and they finished that project, and this was in twenty twenty-one, at a cost of a hundred and twelve dollars, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, nine hundred and sixty-seven, a hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, ninety-eight cents. The concern was the original cost that many years ago was still more than the current bid, and that, that gives me pause for obvious reasons, that I know that they want to do a good job, like I said, it has nothing to do with quality work, nothing whatsoever, I just, it is not responsive, if you cut corners, we, I do not have, you cannot, you can only bid, have a change order, and a change order is a percentage of a contract, so when you have bidders that all bid a certain amount on a contract, there's statutory requirements that will only allow him to do a certain percentage, and if I'm not wrong, it could be, I think, ten percent, but ten percent of a bid, and that is set up statutorily to protect the town and to protect bidders from somebody coming in and just bidding pound it for ten dollars, but then you, you get in to do your work, and they're doing change orders, and you're, you're, you've escalated your project budget, your timeline, and their schedule of the contractor, and you're in this back and forth, and you can't finish your project, so my pause was that, are you able to really do this work? I have a tight timeline with this project, we, all of us want this done, it has drug on, the construction is set to finish by June third, we got an extension for six months, only two allows some plantings, and that is very clear, that's the only thing that we will lack, and that's because of the season, and, but there again, this is the council's decision, staff's recommendation is to award to HGS LLC in a total bid amount of two hundred and eight thousand dollars and six, six, two hundred and eight thousand, six eighty-three, fifty-seven, but that is up to the council to decide that.
Thank you for communicating with all these different folks, everyone involved, so that we can be transparent, not bad with them, and, and be good stewards there.
What's more, would, would anyone make a motion?
Yes, I'd be willing to move to select HGS LLC in the contract as presented by the staff.
Okay, any discussion? One question, Jessica, I mean, Angela, I see that FEMA gave us one sixty-eight, so we're gonna be short, and so that other money's gonna come from this unmet needs funding.
Yes.
So the difference here is that we're probably gonna have to tap that fund for forty thousand dollars?
It is, and I can't write it down until we start receiving invoices, so FEMA's portion is only to repair and put back what was damaged, the unmet needs, their funding goes to mitigate, so there's a slight difference in the design, most of the work was successful, they're, they're not having to redo a lot of this work, there's some problems up near Interstate Forty and that, the bridge that goes over, so that's where they're really focusing a lot of the work, and then part of the trailer's a burn there, so that's called mitigation, so I can't tell you exactly which part of money, which piece of invoice it comes out because we're not there yet, but we do have funding committed in the unmet needs of not to exceed two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that piece, and a hundred and sixty-eight, I think nine and something, some change from FEMA, even with this bid, we are still under the budget.
The balance of that would be in that unmet needs funding?
Yes.
Is that still available to us?
Yes, sir.
Is there a time limit on that for that to get rid of?
We are, our contract is current with them, I had just done a progress report, and if you look at the old contract, it actually says it ended June, June thirty, so we're probably just gonna renew it to match the December thirtieth day, I've already got approvals for extensions of the timeframe from, from FEMA, and it's from the Department of Public Safety, unmet needs, so I have approvals for the extension to December thirty-first, so we're, you're good, sweet man.
With the work that's being done up at the upper end, near the bridge, that is the culverts that go underneath Interstate Forty, would some of that work include underneath and also on the other side, or is it just gonna be on the north side? How many questions, because of the fact that we have a lot of blockage in there? Can we get rid of that blockage?
Can we have you know that I was thinking of having you, and so the engineer, I, he spoke with the Department of Transportation, and we have permission to go in there, and we are going to remove those big stumps and the woodies from there.
Excellent, excellent.
And clean that up, now we can't, we can't dig, we can remove it onto the natural layer, but we, we have everything in place, our engineer Recker is Jason Claudio Diaz, Jason Diaz with Cameron Horn, and he has done an excellent job with this project, and with communication, I keep it on track.
Very good. Excellent. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nine F, also, Angela, just hang tight, resolution to accept grant funding from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality and to approve an agreement for professional design build services for the Black Mountain Swan River Flood Bench and Constructed Wetlands Project, SRP dash SW dash ARP dash zero zero two six. Angela?
As you know, we have received five million dollars in grant money from the EQD's project, it is a very large project, this, this was a special, it was a special, it was a clause, it's a, it's a blend between the state and federal laws, and it allows us to procure engineering services, except that we can ask for price, it's like one of the only times you can do this, because of the way this funding is, you can't, you can't price and do what we're doing with design build otherwise, it's all for, for the state and the grant authority, so to do that, you guys will recall, we obtained extra mon, extra funding from the North Carolina League to assist us with technical services through the public code law firm, so their technical services only go so far, so they, they said to me to write the RFQs and to take me through all this process, but when you get to the point of considering the qualifications, that switches to our town attorney, because it becomes a conflict, and so our town attorney now helps us see the end of this process, so we're in the middle of this process, we have three firms, they're design firms, and so our design build team, it's a whole of a lot of people, so you have builders, engineers, you have subcontractors, and it's all statutorily, statutorily written, they can't change things without our approval, and, and you should see some of these, it's, it's really amazing, we're very fortunate, we have some great firms put in, and they're very close, so we're in the process of evaluating, we're gonna interview them, and, but I do need the attorney's assistance for some, some legal guidance on some of this because of what it is, and so the reason I, we put another motion in front of you is to consider deferring this to your next special meeting, to allow us the extra time to properly interview these three firms and to finish scoring them on, so that I can receive some guidance from our attorney for the pricing element of this, and that, that's all, all, all it is, it's just allow us a little bit of extra time to get this done, so, and it's two, these are two things, and one, so you pair them together, the first part of it is accepting the funds from the EQ, so that's one resolution, that's a formality, that it's entered into a contract, and the other half is gonna be to award the contract to X firm.
Is it gonna be enough, are we worried about time frame, if we have to wait to the next meeting, or should you come back to us at a special call meeting sometime this month?
Special call meeting is what I'm requesting later this month, so the sooner the better, and we are behind schedule, yes and no, so design build puts us on par with the other municipalities to allow us to go, so when you do a design build, you're doing things untended, you're not doing the design and then going out to bid and then getting your, your contractors and going through that process, you're doing it together, and so there's a lot of new pieces, but it allows us to catch up, and it's just.
So what is the date you wanna fill in on the box?
I, I will defer that to council, the next two meetings that you have with your amendment that you approved tonight is March the twenty-first or March the twenty-eighth, the eight-thirty A.M., so I just need the motion to read specific to a date and time certain, so our clerk can have the time.
Is there one that would better suit this process for you?
Either one.
I move that town council defer consideration of the approval of the resolution to accept funding from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality in the amount of five million dollars, and the resolution to approve the agreement with blank selected firm to provide design build services for the Black Mountain Swan River Flood Bench and Constructed Wetlands Project, SRP dash SW dash ARP dash zero zero two six, to the council's special call meeting to be held on March twenty first, twenty twenty-four, at eight thirty A.M. at town hall.
Anybody else have any points they want us to discuss? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Angela, one quick question on this, on the original thing here that says, this grant will allow the town to construct rehabilitate a waste water treatment slash collection system?
No, that's a agreement there.
This is from the, from the new business to, to accept the grant. This was always in our package? Okay, I thought it may be, I thought it may be, that's not a word that we want to use here.
No, it's not, you take away the design builds for large.
Very good, just wanted to check.
Don't want to get into the wastewater business?
No, sir, I'm, I'm, it's great.
Thank you.
Communication from Greg and myself.
Yeah, I'm, I am working with the county attorney on the ACIP agreement, and that has been a fun process, I've got comments back from him. Got comments back from him last week, and the plan is to have this item come up on for April, the agenda, finalize that. He said, agreement, and his original draft is fairly vague. It's about, or our financial department has learned, initially could opt out. And anyway, so we tried to add some detail, provide more objective to the agreement. So that should come up in April. And I'm meeting with, also in April, Jessica to go through my edits or proposals for UDO. She's in my room, she's on all that, and meeting with Jessica for early meeting to give my thoughts.
A couple of things, as Angela mentioned, we're hopeful Veterans Park project will start May 1st. We have to wait until April 15th because of the, because of the drought and spawning. The dam is supposed to, they're supposed to mobilize and have stuff onsite the week of 3/25. We are closed on, we'll be observing Good Friday on March 29th here. And just a reminder that our budget meetings will begin on the 21st of March at 8:30.
Does she have a timing for the dugouts completion?
Oh, probably in the next week, two weeks? They're down there, so our guys are down there. I need to take y'all down there and take a look. So we're doing all that stuff by hand. So all those dugout, all that stuff is being done by our public works guys. Welding is all that, it was pretty impressive, but yes, there's...
Prior to opening day?
Yes. That's it for me.
Town council, have anything you want to say? I've pontificated enough, so I don't have anything else. So, we need to get a motion to go in a closed session.
I'm going to enter the closed session, that's loud and clear, NCGS 143, 31811, A5.
Are you getting your feet on the ground?
A note, a vote?
Aye.
We'll go into closed session. Take a five-minute break first before we start.